Regular meeting of the City Council, Needles Public Utility Authority, City of Needles, California City Council Chambers will come to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell here. Jurnigan.
Here.
Pogue.
Here.
Belt. Here. Longbreak.
Here.
Thank you.
Recede to City Council meeting convene a joint council and PUA meeting. Public comments pertaining to the executive session items, a three-minute time period, time limit per person has been established. No public comment, recess to executive session.
And the executive, executive session items are A, potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.94, one potential case, and this is adverse to the MIH entities, and so I understand that councilmembers Campbell and Pogue will be recusing themselves because their, their sons work at one of the MIH entities.
We don't have a quorum.
Uh, that is correct, we won't. And the, um, the next item, so we won't cover that item since we won't have a quorum. We won't, we won't cover A. And then B would be conference with legal counsel existing litigation. City of Needles versus John Laswell, and this involves property at 1311 Broadway, California Superior Court, case number listed in the agenda. And then item number C would be conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.91, and that's City versus Goldwin. The property is at 1707 Needles Highway, and those are the three items.
We'll call to order the meeting, uh, regular meeting of the City Council, Needles Public Utility Authority, City of Needles, California. Executive session.
Yes. So the council met in, uh, we had on the agenda item A, which was potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.94, and it was one potential get case against the MIH entities. That item was not discussed in closed session. We have two council members that had conflicts that were announced, and for that reason, we didn't have a quorum, so we did not discuss that item in closed session. Item B is conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.91, that's Needles versus Laswell. The property was located, is located at 1311 Broadway, California. There was reportable action on that item. There was a motion to approve a settlement under which the non-compliant structure will be demolished, and the city will be paid its attorney fees and certain costs totaling $6,608.20. That motion was made by councilmember Campbell. The second was made by councilmember Longbreak, and the vote was as follows. Councilmember Belt in favor, uh, councilmember Campbell in favor, councilmember Pogue in favor, and councilmember Longbreak in favor, and so the motion passed approving that settlement. The third item was conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.91, and that involved the City of Needles versus Goldwin LLC involving the property at 1707 Needles Highway, and that's the River Valley Inn. And there was no reportable action taken on that item, and that concludes the report out from closed session.
Thank you. Call to order.
Councilmember Campbell here. Merritt.
Here.
Jurnigan.
Here.
Pogue.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longbreak.
Here.
And we'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. We thank you for our city, for our elected officials, for the trust bestowed upon us, for the businesses, the churches, the families, and individuals, our visitors, and surrounding communities who make our City of Needles the great destination that it is. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Motion for approval of the agenda.
I'm going to approve.
Take seconds.
Madam Chair, Honorable Mayor, uh, I'd like to, uh, sorry to interrupt. I need to pull item number 19 and remove it from tonight's agenda. I will bring it back. I'll readdress it at a later date.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pogue.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Yes.
Conflict of interest?
Uh, yes, I have a conflict of interest on item number three. Due to the fact that I'm an advocate for recovery, I don't think I could be fair and unjust.
So just to be clear on that, it's not, it's not a conflict, it's, it's a issue of bias, and so councilmember Longbreak is saying that he doesn't think he can be fair and impartial on that because of his activities with recovery issues, and so that's a matter of recusing himself because he doesn't think that he can be fair and impartial.
And I as well have a conflict of interest with item number three since I opined at the, on this issue at the planning commission meeting.
Madam, Madam Chair, uh, I also, Honorable Mayor, I also have a conflict on tonight's agenda, uh, on item number five, and so does Candace Martinez regarding this item because I live within close proximity to the parcel, and Candace Martinez has reported to me she also works for Mr. Carroll, so we will be recusing ourselves.
I think I, I mean, I've recused myself on five in the past, so.
On item five, and that's because you live in close proximity.
proximity.
So you're recusing yourself for that reason.
I mean, I recuse of each one, so.
Yeah.
I keep going.
Okay.
Would we have a quorum on that?
Two, three, four.
Respondents.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, I do have two emails, one from Jason Cornell and Richard Cornell, both in opposition to item number five.
Okay, thank you. Introductions, tonight we have Terry Campbell, prior City Council and Utility Commissioner, Sean Goodmanson, and Tim Terrell. Thank you. Is that, oh, and Zach Longacre. Sorry about that.
It's so long.
Okay. City Attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the council, the mayor presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No members shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Members of the public attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council, and just as a reminder, the council has adopted a three-minute time limit for public comments.
Thank you. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode, thank you. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the NPUA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled or requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name, address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code section 54950 prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Zach.
Good morning, Your Honor, or good, good evening, Your Honor.
It's okay.
Good evening, Council. Zachary Longacre, 59 Front Street. Um, I got six or seven things, so hopefully I can run through them in three minutes. Um, we voted on a stop sign at front in K Street going in westernly direction when I was a counselor. We had a traffic study on it. We voted five to one to put it in, then they closed the underpass, we never put it in. It needs to be put in now. Uh, the dirt road to the ballpark on the other side of K Street should have been tailed multiple times since we laid the last one in. It hasn't, it's a dirt road again, we need to fix that. The skate park, it's been paid for, why isn't the bench put in? Why isn't the trees put in? The trees were donated, this isn't part of the grant. This was taxpayers' money, we're sitting on it, we're being lazy, lazy enough to where the park's been graffiti-ed again. Luckily, I have the paint to cover it at my house. Porta entries, we need those finished. Um, the state's doing due diligence on making our on-ramps look great, the bridge looks amazing, I would love to see a fresh coat of paint on the overpasses in town and the California Tunnel to match. Um, the visitor center, that little corner right there ain't a parking lot. It's a drop-off for handicapped, it's also a fire hydrant, fire zone for fire trucks. Every damn time we have an event there, there's 10 cars there. I've clipped, almost clipped one two or three times at night, ridiculous. There's a parking lot on the west side of the building no one uses. Uh, last but not least, um, the next time the sheriff's contract comes up, don't ignore it, talk with them, work with them. Um, real crimes are coming from California to this city, we're seeing them. Don't ignore it again, please. Um, I don't want to have to shoot no one, you know? I don't think anyone does. Those guys stop stuff like that, you know? I kind of find someone crawling through my wall in the middle of the night to take my safe, I don't know what I'd do. I know Gary's feeling it, I know those little old ladies that run Rite Aid are feeling it, that's all I got. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay. If there's not anyone else, um, it'll be closed for a public comment. Oh, okay, I'm sure, go ahead.
I'm excited to be here. Um, sorry, my name's Preston Taylor, I live at 202 Oak Circle here in Needles.
Sorry.
Um, I have kind of a simple little project that I like to bring to you guys' attention that I'd like to try and achieve, it's a peace poll, um, I'm not too sure if you guys have ever heard of it. It's a little, uh, not necessarily simple, but it's quite simple, um, and I don't know if the city would be welcomed to even put that on city property or something like that, so I'm here to kind of raise that to your attention, I guess, um, that I'd like some help working with that, if that's okay with you guys. Um, yeah, I don't know, are there any questions from you guys? As far as a speech, I was prepared, but, um, I was just gonna try and wing it, because it's, it's kind of simple, you know? Um, I'm not sure if you've ever heard of a peace poll, but they're in a whole bunch of countries around the world, and they, they started after World War II, um, and I mean, it doesn't hurt to be reminded of peace, we have so many statues around, and I'm actually impressed that Needles has all of that stuff, so I think it would be great to add another addition, because we're getting more travelers and stuff like that as well, and another, excuse me, another symbol of peace does not, uh, does not hurt. So, yeah, I'd like to raise that to you guys' attention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, and one more thing, we do have an excused absence for Jamie McCorkle tonight, Councilor Jamie McCorkle tonight, too.
Mayor, if I can, just for the speaker's benefit, let, let him know that under the Brown Act, um, the council, because the item is not on the agenda, they couldn't engage in a dialogue with you, so that's all, all they could do was let you speak, well, except to the mayor.
Thanks, Ben.
Presentations, a 10-minute time limit per presentation has been established per municipal code section 2-18. Administer the oath of office to Patrick Martinez, City Manager, Rainey Torrance, Utility Manager.
Yeah. Again, you said that was the last.
Excuse it. Thank you.
Don't worry.
Not gonna move her unless you want me to, Dale.
Don't stand up.
Thunder never sends up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's always good at that.
I got it, thank you. Need to fall down.
No.
I fell on my.
Yeah.
Yes, she'll, she's, she's. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Well, sort of, go ahead, we were ready, go ahead. You were practicing.
I state your name.
Patrick Martinez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the deeds upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the deeds upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, now I need your official signature.
Don't step on it.
Make sure a person taking oath perfect.
I didn't put time.
Patrick.
Patrick signed the wrong spot.
I'll sign on.
I know where you went.
I, I got the pen.
You got the pen.
Right, yeah. All right, will you give him the logo?
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
I didn't want to go face down.
No.
Thank you.
She wouldn't let you do that.
She'd break my fall. Aparazzi.
Yes.
One more, one more, one more.
Walk around the wallet.
Same pose, same pose.
I didn't even get it. That was a good, that was a nice one.
Get a copy, they're five bucks each.
We are very blessed.
She was pushing out the door, she was trying to mistake.
Um, presentation by Institute for Local Governments, ILG 2023 Beacon Spotlight Award to the City of Needles.
Can I, can I go ahead?
Hi, Nikita, let me give you just an introduction.
Okay, hey, Rainey.
Hi, uh, thank you, Mayor and councils, tonight we have Nikita on, she is with ILG, the Institute for Local Governments. I am pleased tonight that, um, she is here to present an award, uh, to the City Council for an achievement, um, that the city received through the Beacon Program. So Nikita, if you want to go ahead, and then I have the award after, we'll present and do a real quick group picture.
Great, uh, good afternoon, everybody, my name is Nikita Sinha, I'm a program manager with the Institute for Local Government, um, it was so great to meet several of you up in Sacramento recently, um, but for those of you who aren't familiar, Institute for Local Government, we're the nonprofit education and training affiliate, um, for the League of California Cities, along with the California State Association of Counties and Special Districts Association, uh, and we do a lot of work with local government, um, but one of our, one of our longstanding programs, which has been around since 2010, is called the Beacon Program, which exists as a recognition program focused on acknowledging the steps that local governments are taking proactively to address climate change, energy efficiency, water use efficiency, uh, and sustainability in general. Over the past decade, the program has evolved to include a framework where cities and counties can plan, share, and evaluate innovative strategies and programs to address a variety of climate-related issues facing our cities across the state. And this year, we were very excited to welcome the City of Needles into that Beacon cohort, um, which consists of over 170 local government agencies statewide that are committed to making their communities more sustainable, more healthy, um, and, and just generally increasing the quality of life for the residents that they serve. So the Beacon Awards celebrate participants for achievement, um, across five different categories, which include energy savings, natural gas savings, community greenhouse gas, uh, reductions, and agency greenhouse gas emission reductions, and sustainability best practices, and it's that last category that we're really excited, um, to recognize the City of Needles for with a silver level spotlight award for sustainability best practices. And really what that means is the Sustainability Best Practices Award recognizes achievements not just in one area, but across 10 different categories, um, that capture, um, what sustainable, sustainable cities might look like, that includes water use efficiency, clean transportation, parks and open spaces, um, land use and planning, and energy efficiency among those categories. So the spotlight award really recognizes the city's holistic commitment to sustainability, environmental preservation, and a high quality of life for all residents, so we're really, really excited to congratulate the city for the award. I know having worked with, um, your staff and your leadership, um, through the boost program, the, the level of commitment and work that goes in on these projects and grant writing and implementing projects, so really, really just excited to say congratulations and celebrate the City of Needles.
Thank you. Please, Dan, we're gonna take a photo for the paper.
Nikita, stay on, we'll get you in the background.
I was just about to.
Come over here, then.
We're gonna do Jan right here, and you guys on the side.
I said you want to get her in the background.
She'll see, you'll see her on the side.
Oh, okay.
Nikita in the picture.
Congratulations, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, congrats Rainey and Patrick as well.
Thank you, Nikita. And thank you, Rainey. Yeah.
Okay. I guess we have to leave, huh?
I think so, but we're gonna wait though.
Public hearings, number three.
Yep.
Um, due to lack of quorum, this, um, uh, public hearing notice will be continued at the next meeting. Public hearing number four, notice to all, consider all of the evidence and testimony for or against ordinance number 663-ac, amending the Needles Municipal Code, NMC, sections of the zoning ordinance as follows. Section 9-4 permits section 9-6 uses. Section 9-7, intensity of uses. Section 9-8, site requirements. Section 99, development standards. Section 111, vehicular provisions. Section 112, special requirements for certain users. Section 115, non-conforming situations. Needles Municipal Code, Chapter 19, subdivision of land. Staff report.
Yes, uh, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, we have the zoning code update, basically the ordinance has been updated since 1995, you know, we've got our presentation ready for you, but I think we've gone through this a bunch of times, so I just want to make sure that we're beating this to death, but at the end of the day, what we're doing is we're bringing ourselves into compliance at the state level. As you recall, the city hadn't done a general plan update since 2005, and so at that point in time, they did, they did do, um, the housing element update, and so when we weren't out of compliance and not completed the housing element, the state reached out and said, you basically have to get your compliance rules, we're gonna take away your zoning authority. You're seeing that in other state, uh, cities like Huntington Beach and, and other ones that are basically losing their ability to, uh, deny projects, and so in front of you we have are the changes that were adopted through the housing element that was adopted last September to help bring ourselves into compliance, that basically allows for land use code that we have here in the city to meet, match state law, and so it basically allows us to be, uh, you know, out of the doghouse, so to speak, so that we basically are able to, uh, entitle the projects that we'd like, and again, we had two public hearings, uh, we have this one, and we had the Planning Commission public hearing, and in addition to that, we had two workshops, so we heard you all loud and clear, we took those comments that you had, and we put them into this code, and we amended it so that it, uh, it remedies those issues that we all had, and some of those issues were home occupancy, we took away some of those requirements, so we didn't run into some of those issues. Uh, again, uh, we are creating parking requirements so that we can have higher, uh, we can allow for reduction of parking requirements around housing, uh, steel buildings to be able to be utilized for, uh, metal storage containers to be for building materials, walls and fences, and again, we're, we're doing these things so that we bring ourselves into compliance, and so I, we, we could go through the presentation, but if you have any questions, maybe let's start there, and then we can jump into the presentation if necessary.
Any questions, sir?
Didn't we go through this? We did this already, why are we coming before us again?
So, good question, so we were, what we wanted to do, and we did that with the general plan as well, we wanted to provide an opportunity to have a public workshop, and so that you were totally informed about what was in front of you, give us any comments, we took those comments, went back, made those amendments, and now that's what you have in front of you. And so basically, we just wanted to make sure, because of the deadlines that we have for grant requirements, to ensure that we get this through as expeditiously as possible and by transparency, we were able to achieve that goal, and so that's why you've seen it twice, because the first time it was just to receive input from the public, and you all, the council, and we also did that with the planning commission and the public, and so we were able to get full input from everybody, now you've got the, uh, the, uh, the final draft with the, with the package all wrapped up, and so to answer your question, it's just to get it adopted officially to go through the process, so our recommendation is that we get this, uh, adopted tonight so that we can bring ourselves into compliance, and we are also, uh, ensuring that we have a zoning code update that is enforceable at the state level, you know, in local, they, they care about certain issues that we have adopted within years that we don't lose our agency to be able to zone and, when we, um, develop projects in our town.
Okay.
And the, um, planning commission approved it, at their meeting, correct?
Yes, and there was a unanimous, uh, after some dialogue and discussion, uh, there was a, a unanimous approval by the planning commission to move this forward, so recommendations are clear.
I'm going to approve. Also, we have to do public hearing.
That's right, you're right, so my motion is, uh, what I'm recommending is to approve it.
Okay. Sorry.
We still do your part.
Yeah.
Um, we're open to a public hearing, anybody have a comment regarding this? If not, public hearing is closed. No council discussion, um, a motion?
I'm going to approve.
I'll suck it.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pogue.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
Number five, resolution 2023-56, approving tentative parcel map 2388, subdividing 6.5 acres into two parcels located in the R2, two-family residential zone, also known as APN 0185-233-55, located behind 1335 Lily Hill Drive, and consider possible sale. Staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable City Council. This item was brought to you prior to, with Rick bringing this to you, uh, last session, and you wanted to hear it, so it is before you tonight, the City Council Resolution 2023 is for a, um, tentative map, 20388, and it's subdividing 6.5 acres, and, uh, it will have a remaining parcel of 5.79 that will be continually owned by the city. The City Council is hearing this to complete the tentative map, which is a precondition to the final sale, uh, and the tentative map is categorically exempt from the, um, environmental sequo, as it has, uh, no additional analysis required. The findings are that it is consistent with, uh, Needles General Plan, Needles Municipal Code, and State Subdivision Map Act. The recommendation is to approve, and we have conditions that if there is any development, there will be. that if there is any development, there will be further review permits and discussions. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, just for the record, I just wanted to note that we had Councilmember Bell recuse herself for the reason she stated earlier.
Okay, thank you. Council questions of staff? It's okay.
You have a question?
Well, I wanted to discuss this email that we received regarding it. Would that be now, or would that be?
After a public comment.
Don't they just talk about it?
Yeah. No, they do.
They don't, they talk about it.
I do, I just want for a point of clarification. What we have before us is to approve a map. It's just, just approving a map.
It's a tentative map. That the parcel is like this, and there's a little.
So it can be carved up. That's all.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Public comment, anybody having a public comment? And Debbie Parnell, for the record, is the, one of the applicants.
Yes, my name is Debbie Parnell. I live at one, three, five, five, Lily Hill Drive. And I come to comment on the sale. I'm very concerned because I believe that parcel goes back behind my house. And when I bought my house thirty-three years ago, there was the road that goes back behind my house can be an exit from my backyard. So my concern is, is if you sell that, that I will no longer be able to access my backyard from that road. My husband has his boat back there. He has his Jeep back there. He has a trailer back there. We use that back road. And if that's blocked off, then that means that we have to go find a storage unit, pay monthly for that storage unit, or park it out on the street. So my concern is, will we have access to our backyard? I'm very concerned about that. That that would be a deal breaker for me if I could not get to my backyard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we're done?
Hi, I'm Debbie's wife, Richard Parnell. I live at thirteen, fifty-five, Lily Hill Drive. For the last thirty years, I bought that in nineteen ninety, and bought it from Porter's, and Porter's told me at the time that that was an easement back there. And it ran all the way behind the Seventh-day Adventist Church at the time. Well, then the Seventh-day Adventist Church decided to build a gym back there. I didn't raise hell about it because it was for the kids, so I didn't say anything about it. But then later on, Seventh-day Adventist, because of all the quads running back there, they put the fence all the way out to the, their property line, which blocked that access road that went all the way through at one time. So now we have just the access coming from the east side. And so what I'm worried about is just like my wife said, we won't have access to our backyard. My son just bought the property next to me expecting the same thing. And I know there's two other people that live in the same area that I think is gonna affect their back access too. So I just wanted to make that clear. That I don't think it's the right thing to do to break up a six-and-a-half acre parcel into a three-quarter acre parcel just for somebody's private use. It doesn't seem right to me. I've been there for thirty years, like I say, and it's, I don't like it, but whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? If not, public comments closed. And then go ahead. Did you want, Ellen, do you have a question for her, or do you want to explain the parking?
That's undeveloped. It has been, that has been shown. And we have not found any easement of record.
We have found no easement of record. It's an open, undeveloped piece of property.
This property falls under the surplus land that the city owns. We have, we have land all over the place that we can't use, won't use, will never use. And so all that surplus land is subject to sale if someone wants to buy it.
Is that correct? Yes.
Have a question?
Sure, come.
Does yours have to go up? Sale of the property?
I don't know, Rainie, or?
I understand.
I wanted the applicant to answer that. I don't have the history, but Rick said that it had gone out to bid and was completed. It was the only bid. And it, in terms of no easement found on record, we don't have any recording of that. If we find something later, it might show up in the title report, but of the city records, we have no easement.
Okay.
Since the, I have a question. Since the city, this is city-owned property. So could we not move the, I guess it's the north border, back to create a road that's owned, or an alleyway that's owned by the city? So that would save your access to the back of your property? Is that something that can be done as a compromise on, on both sides?
Yeah.
Yes, Chairman, Mayor, members of councils, I just want to make sure that I bring that up, that if you do dedicate that as a city road, we bear responsibility for paving and milling and unpaved roads. So an easement might be a better course of direction if you're looking to, or we can rebid the sale of the parcel that was done, as Nancy mentioned a few years ago. So those are a few options.
Okay.
Okay.
Council discussion. Are we gonna call for a?
I'll move to approve the map. This is not approving the sale of anything. This is just a map.
Correct.
As is?
Just as is written. This is just, we're only approving a map.
A map.
We're not.
He's not, yeah, he's not getting a final sale, it's just approving a map.
So this will not preclude us in the future from addressing the road? The access?
That the map should include an easement.
We have, yeah, you can't, but we're gonna just approve the map. And.
You have to come, sorry.
Come on back up.
Nancy's new, we're breaking her in.
How's, how's it working for you?
This is a undeveloped land parcel, and at this time, it is going to remain that. In the future, those items could be brought up again under a permitting process.
Okay, thank you.
What we're looking at tonight is just the tentative map.
Okay.
And the processes of that.
Okay.
But to be clear, to be clear on the record, Mayor, from the comments of the council, you're, it sounds like you're inclined to approve the map, but not sale at this time. That would be something you would explore at a later time.
And that's what it says in here. Right.
Well, I just wanted to be clear on the record that.
Right.
Yeah.
Do the map.
Yeah.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Public comments pertaining to the NPUA council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. NPUA council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the NPUA city council may pull an item from the motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the NPUA city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to NPUA council action, a member of the public may address the NPUA city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies, and the recommended action is approve items six through nine on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
We have one council member returning. That should be returning Councilmember Bell.
We gotta read that over and over.
There we go.
We gotta read that over, don't we?
No, we don't need to read it over, but she should be in here for the vote.
Tony, we're on recommended action, approve items six to nine of the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
Catch up first.
For sixty-nine?
Yeah.
Who, we're not approved, did we talk about eight and nine?
No one said anything. No, no one said anything. Okay, pull eight and nine. So we'll approve items six through seven. And then city manager, number eight.
Yeah, no problem. Madam Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, every, every year, on October first, we, we take a look at the COLA increases that are required to help for our, our systems. In front of you, we're, we're talking about eight, we're talking about nine, but they're basically the same deal as that. Put in print what you have in front of you today is the annual cost of living adjustment to the basic charge and usage for both water and wastewater. And that's eight. So every household is gonna go up five point seven four dollars per month. And so as you recall, last year, the COLA increase was around seven. It's luckily, this year, it's only at three point six. And so we're, this went to the utility board on October third, and they, they approved it unanimously. But at the end of the day, this is something that needs to move forward to help cover the costs of our, of our system. And, and, you know, we recommend approval. And we've taken the CPI for the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics for the West, or you take the twelve months' actual expenses plus the CPI, whichever is lower, we ended up at three point six. And so this is gonna be an increase of five point seven four per month for water and wastewater. That's the first thing we have on the agenda.
Is this part of a, can you pause? We did with.
When they do, yeah, this is our COLA increase that's been identified through our rate study. And so I'm sure Terry Comber's gonna come help and support or provide his public input. The second, I got Rainie, who's all that can provide insight on it. Stan Tech did a rate scan for us, and we already adopted this. We're just putting it in the implementation.
And that rate study proposed five years of increases to keep up with costs to cover operation and maintenance, debt serviced, depreciation of assets, and a prudent reserve.
Wasn't there a specific number we were going up every year?
Well, this is, again, it's determined by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the size class, ECCPI of the June value, or the twelve months of expenses plus CPI, whichever is lower. So we can go up five.
We can go up to five. If we can go up to five, okay.
So last year, it was seven. So it was higher than that, so we had a lot, we weren't able to cover that. And so, but this time, it's only three point six, so it's within our range of the policy.
Okay, and the same thing with number nine?
Yeah, and it was, with number nine, we're gonna talk about number nine. That's the same concept. It's went up, went up three point six percent for the cost of living for the electric specifically. And so you're gonna see a point one, four, six, seven effective rate come this November. If you look at the current basic charge of thirty-four point zero one, it's gonna be go up to thirty-five point twenty-three come November.
It's like one penny?
And again, you look at these rates, Terry was very helpful in providing us with a weighted rate that showed how we compared to the rest of California and the rest of the United States. We're very competitive in terms of where our rate stands.
Rainie, you want?
Mayor, councilors, Terry Campbell, forty-four, sixty-nine, Bourbon Street, and Chairman of the Board of Public Utilities. This is in our rate policy that's been approved by previous councils and updated by, I think, three years ago. It was updated, or maybe, maybe two years ago when we, we, when we, I don't want to offend anybody's political leanings.
Come on, do it.
But, but as soon, as soon as the current president got sworn in and started canceling natural gas pipelines, we, we had to make a modification of it then two years ago, where we're currently using our power purchase component, which is our tier-two pricing on the electrical, that's item nine. We had to raise it to twenty percent of last year's power costs. And that we change whenever we're in a negative position in that power purchase account to recoup that. But these two items are basically in the rate policy where the cost of living adjustment is made yearly, and it's based on the June component, not the whole year, but just what, whatever the CPI for June is for the small cities, small and medium-sized cities on the west, during the United States. And like it's already been mentioned, a year ago, it was seven point six percent. We could only go to five because in our rate studies and our rate policies for those three enterprises, we're capped at five percent. So we lost ground last year. This year, it's three point six. And that's just to help keep our basic service charge, which is our, the component of your bill that covers fixed costs. Energy is a cost that's always changing in the marketplace. Natural gas, I don't know if you guys look at that on your computer when you look at your financial page and see what the price of natural gas is. Used to be around two point six cents a million BTUs. Two years ago, it jumped all the way up to seven point eight cents. And that's when we had to start paying instead of thirty-five to forty-five dollars a megawatt, now we're paying in the two hundred dollar range. So that these things are costs that are just to keep our utilities solvent. Our utilities are not a profit-making business that are basically owned by the city itself. But I always, since I'm a retired public utility employee, I always worked for the ratepayers. And that's, but, and it's, the comparisons that I provided to city staff, the average cost of energy across the United States, and you gotta take into consideration that you've got Washington, the state of Washington, that has the Columbia River, and has got a lot of hydro. Oregon has a lot of hydro. Louisiana and Texas has a lot of oil and natural gas. So the average cost across the country is seventeen cents a kilowatt hour. We're gonna be at fourteen point five on tier two, but you gotta blend your hydro component of your bill with tier one with tier two to come up with what is our average cost of energy. And on my bill for my house, my average cost of energy is thirteen cents compared to seventeen cents nationwide and thirty cents for California utility customers. So any, any questions, I'd be glad to try to enlighten.
Thank you, Terry.
Great job.
Thank you, Terry.
I move to approve.
I'll second it. Call for the vote.
Oh, wait, wait.
Public.
Oh, Mayor, I was just gonna ask to make sure there wasn't any other public comments.
Is there any other public comment regarding the rate increase? If not, public comment is closed. Call for the vote.
Six, three, nine.
Six through nine.
Now, smoke, Campbell? Yes. Here's to.
Yes.
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 Well, yes. Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
End of the UPA consent calendar. Adjourn the joint NPUA council meeting and convene a joint council Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting, HACN. Public comments pertaining to the HACN council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items ten through sixteen on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
Can I pull fourteen?
Um, yes, we hear fourteen. So we'll approve ten through thirteen and then fifteen through sixteen. Okay. Staff?
Yes, honorable members of the council in front of you. As you're aware, a couple of months ago, we had our public restroom sewer system collapse at the golf course. So at that point in time, we immediately put out a, we responded, we first assessed and then responded. We took up a porta potty that is short of VIP up at the golf course. At that point in time, we immediately looked at opportunities to go out to bid, and we did. Went out to RFP. We have one bidder that stood out to, to us, and that was a twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five bid project cost, which has a ten percent contingency included in that. And so what's important to note, though, is that the insurance is going to cover roughly seventeen thousand of that. And then the remainder, and the city has to pay for the pipes, so the general fund will pay approximately fifteen thousand of that. And so that because of the age of the pipe, the insurance company was able to replace, remove, but not replace. And so we went out to bid and do it all. And so that's what you have in front of you right now, is that a bid replaced a cast iron in the golf course bathrooms to help bring it back so that we can utilize it. I know a couple of years ago, we did do a remodel of the bathroom. At that point in time, only everything above the ground was replaced, not below the ground. And so this became a new issue just recently, and we're addressing it.
Does our insurance pays for how much of this?
Yeah, the insurance is going to pay for the remainder of it. So roughly ten thousand, seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Can I ask?
Sure.
So is this going to do anything with the beach project?
So this is different from the beach project. This is just the existing bathroom that's there today.
Is the hookup going to be, how's the hookup going to go with that?
So we're working, that's, that's not on the agenda tonight.
It's completely separate.
I'd be happy to discuss it with you, certainly, but that's, that isn't something that.
This is just the pipe underneath it?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
So that'll be the tenth, okay. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
End of the council consent calendar. Regular council items provide staff direction based on the Aquatic Center audit and summary of the findings.
Yeah, just briefly, I'm going to introduce this real quick. So we, we're giving direction to go out and do an evaluation of the pool. And so now Kathy Ross, I'm sure you're all familiar with, she's our project manager. She worked closely with Rainey to get this evaluation done. So she's going to provide you with the specifics.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Kathy Ross, project manager. As Patrick said earlier this year, we solicited a consultant to perform a needs assessment evaluation of the Needles Aquatic Center. As you know, the facility is over twenty years old and is showing signs of aging beyond its useful life. Therefore, the aquatic design group was brought on board to inspect and audit the aquatic center to identify existing code violations, ADA accessibility issues, mechanical deficiencies in the chemical room, and the overall site concerns. So I put together a summary sheet that was handed out to you, I believe in your packet, which breaks down the code issues, the cost of the code issues, the ADA concerns, the mechanical improvements that are needed, and, and any upgrades that would occur to the site. There's also a list of enhancements. It's kind of separated into the code ADA issues, and then below that is the enhancements that would provide improvements for your long-term improvements, remove all of the necessary maintenance that's ongoing every year, and basically renovate the entire aquatic center site. The costs associated with those items, they're in that breakdown. They include the markup, bonding, contingency, any escalation costs that are anticipated. So with that said, you'll see a total project cost if we did everything, went out to bid, with everything would be approximately four point eight million. With, with that said, staff is requesting comments and our direction of acceptance of the audit that's in front of you, and what manner to proceed with funding opportunities. So this kind of gives you an opportunity where we could move, we could move forward with just the code compliance issues, the ADA, the stuff that's mandatory. If we start improving the site, those things kick in. But that doesn't address all of those things, like the side, the slide really needs to be replaced. The pool needs new plaster. The decking is in bad shape. So all of those things, to address all of those, you're looking at the full amount. But, but tonight, what we're looking for is if you concur with the audit and any recommendation on how to move forward with funding opportunities.
Well, we're going to actively search opportunities for either USDA loans, or we're going to come back to you all with that. But basically, our grant opportunities and other grants are available. We can reach out to the county supervisors. We're going to, we're going to find those revenue sources. We're going to go ahead and track every which way we can. Staff's been very successful in doing that in the past. We wanted you all to know what's going on. So between, you know, we use the, the pool from May throughout the September, and we've got numerous activities that take place in the pool. So we've got some time to, to get, you know, to get this into shape. So that we, next May, when that comes around, we're able to, you know, improve the pool to at least be safe for residents swimming inside it. So our goal is to do the, the maximum amount with the funds that we have available to be able to fix this problem. As you know, four point seven to quarter of our general fund.
Yeah.
So we would have to find ways to find revenue sources that aren't already within our current budget to be able to address these issues.
Um, thank you. This is wonderful. This, this gives us something to note. This tells us exactly what we need to do long-term. Just all of this has to be done. Every bit of this has to be done eventually. But obviously, we can't do it. We don't have four point nine, four point seven, four million, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. But we have something. And while we're searching for grants, my thoughts and suggestions are that we need to take care of the things that are most crucial. Like the bottom of the pool is cutting people's feet. You know, the bottom of the pool, there's rebar, there's safety issues. Whatever, whatever we can do in increments to move towards this whole package, as long as we're moving forward, whichever is deemed most important to keep it running, and without flagging anything, that we move forward that way.
Right.
In whatever order this is.
If we were to move forward with maintenance issues only, if you're just going to address the plaster, then all of the ADA would not kick in. But once you start touching the grounds, you start adding a component like a splash pad that we mentioned in here, or replacing the slide. Once you go above and beyond the basic maintenance, then all of those ADA and code compliance issues kick in. Just be aware.
Mechanical, chemical equipment, water slide maintenance, skimmer boxes, the, the bottom of the pool, the plaster.
Correct.
Not the deck itself.
The decking is not really a, a life or safety issue. I mean, it's more cosmetic, so.
So that could, if there was, you know, if that was the way. And then, okay, so that, that's just my thoughts. Those are my thoughts, that we move gingerly.
So is there, is there, yeah, is there any way to segregate the cost to absolutely necessary pool expenses that would include, obviously, you've got in the code compliance issues, you've got decking and miscellaneous that can probably be pulled out of our immediate needs. But then you're going to have some of these other things like contractor markups, et cetera, that would probably have to be pulled in. So is there any way to isolate the pool costs, just the pool that we absolutely have to do? And then the rest would be everything else that, yeah, we, we need to do that too, but it's not as critical.
Yeah. So when you're looking at the code compliance issues, I put on their main drains, the pool finish, the perimeter enclosures, the decking, that decking is, is repair. So those things, those items are strictly repair items that will bring you up to code. The ADA access concerns, the same thing. It's just once you start doing major improvements to the site, all of those kick in and are mandatory. So with that, it, it depends what you're wanting to do. If you're wanting, if you're wanting to just plaster the pool, you'll see that down there under enhancement. It's considered an enhancement, the main pool of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, but, but it's a maintenance activity. We're not building anything new. It's something existing that needs maintenance. It's cutting people's feet. It can, that can be replaced without addressing the whole site ADA. You know, but, but to answer your question, we can. I would have to be a little more specific on how you wanted it broke up, but we could.
Well, I mean, to replace the interior of the pool, I think that's what we're kind of.
Parts that have to be done versus the other. So, yeah, clean this up. So it looks not four point seven million.
Patrick?
Yeah, so basically, we just be near the section loud and clear. So you want us to do with the minimal that's needed to be done to bring it up in the compliance? So we're going to go ahead and move forward with that?
Unless we can get grants.
No, we're going to, we're going to still pursue all that.
Yeah, if we can get, if we get grants, let's grant, buy the grant for everything.
Right, but there's limited grants for this.
I understand that.
So there's very, so what we hear from you.
Rainy's really good, though.
Bring us into compliance, we will, we will provide a scope of work that gets us to where we need to go. So we're not, we are compliant and doing the maintenance of the property of the pool. So we hear you.
Right. Um, also, is this, are we still, the parks grants still out there this, next year? Or no?
Nope, that was the last one.
They're done?
Yeah, that, that way it might give us a better, because I saw that five million dollar price tag and went, holy buckets. And, you know, if we can figure, these are the must-dos, and this is what we can do a little bit later.
So are we, what are we voting on then?
Nothing really. We heard your direction. So go ahead and go down that road.
Okay.
Find revenue sources to be able to bring the pool into compliance, that at least, you know, the, the maintenance, not only the maintenance, but what we can do without triggering, you know, we can find a USDA loan that will cover all of this at a reasonable cost, we'll do that. And so, but what we need from you, we want you guys to accept this report tonight. Acknowledge that it exists to give us the empowerment to move forward to go find revenue sources.
In whatever order you need to.
And then give us a little different breakdown on where those costs lie.
I can do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Next, mission statement and goals for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, as you recall, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, the city council met for a special session with all the what, this is a process. And so as we go through the process, we're going to keep whittling it down and going through. So what you have in front of you were the notes that were taken by the moderator that day. So the, as you recall, moderator, Mr. Daniels. And so he has provided us with these notes. We want to make sure that we got it all right. And so we want to hear the input from you to make sure that we heard you correctly in terms of what the vision was and the goals were, the SWOT analysis was and priorities were. So that we can go ahead and draft the goals. Because as you remember, as you recall, you know, these goals are what set the, the pathway for the city manager and the staff. And so this is how I'm evaluated. This is how, you know, we set the priorities for when you give us, when you ask me to do a work order for something that you want done, we, we, we request that we circle back to the vision, the goals. And we, you know, we make sure that it's in there. So that way we're not going through four or five or six different rabbit holes. We want to ensure that we are going down the rabbit hole that the city council and the consensus has agreed on. And so, because that's how we're going to be making budget decisions. That's how we're going to be bringing our efforts towards. And so this is step one. I want you to acknowledge this vote. And this is a process. We will, once you acknowledge and you, you review these, you can give me, you know, send me your emails. We'll put them together in a package that will present you with clear goals and visions so that we're, again, we went through that already. But I wanted to make sure that we, before we went to that second step, we were all on the same page of what was discussed.
So it's so fun.
Any questions? And just for the, in the public, it's, it's in the packet, and it's, and it's there for everybody to see. There will be a public hearing on this moving forward. And so the way, so we will draft up a, set a vision and set the goals. There will be a public hearing. The public can come comment on the vision and goals that the council set forth as we've gone through this process. And we're, we're aiming to get this done within the next couple of months. That's going to be our, so that we can have these going into the new year with the, you know, as it, with the new city manager, with the new utility manager, we have the clear vision of what you expect to meet as I sit up here in front of you all.
Okay, thank you. And the visitor center services agreement amendment.
Yeah.
Or?
Number, oh, it's the number.
Number twenty.
Yeah, so number twenty, Visitor Center Services Agreement. Yes, so in front of you, we have, as you recall, on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, the city council entered into agreement with the visitor center. Visitor Center, we went out to RFP, we got a response to folks of those, one, at the end of the day, the council that accepted the Chamber of Commerce, we entered into the agreement. And within that agreement, there was a scope of services that were provided. And so after meeting with the visitor center, they came in, and we talked about some of these goals. And within the amend, within the agreement, it was pregnant with chamber type of scope of services that needed to not be included in what a visitor center is. As you recall, the visitor center is a twelve-hundred square foot building that is there for, you know, folks that are coming, visiting the city to get information on the city and tourist, tourist opportunities around it, you know. And basically, at the end of the day, there were some scope of work, you know, ribbon cuttings and, and event planning and things that aren't part of a visitor center per se that are, that are, you know, that were within this agreement. And so we met with the chamber, and then we met with the subcommittee, the Visitor Center Subcommittee. And so they can highlight some of, some of these comments. But we went ahead and took the direction, went through the agreement, took away, you know, tour, tours given, event planning, and elimination of a billboard signage that we don't own anymore. So we can't, if we don't have the billboard, we can't require them to advertise on top of it. You know, removal of holiday hours, they're going to stay constant, ten to three throughout the year. They're not going to have less hours during the winter and more hours during, so they're not going to do that. They're establishing ten to three, Tuesday through Saturday. And then there's elimination of the coordinating family responsibilities. So these are, these are matched up with, you know, what they wanted. This matches up with what the subcommittee wanted. And so I don't know if one of the subcommittee members wants to comment. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we needed to clean up to just differentiate as a subcommittee member between the chamber versus the visitor center. So whoever's in there, whether it be the chamber or not the chamber, doesn't have to follow the rules of the chamber. It's a visitor center. So it was just to clean it up. I think it's just those couple of items. I think it's exactly what we wanted.
Employee appreciation event.
We have to vote.
We have to vote.
Oh, we have to vote on, okay.
Call. I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Yes, Merritt?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Employee appreciation event.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilor Bell actually put this on the agenda, so I'll, I'll still my time to her.
Yep, every year, for the last four years, well, discounting one of them, we've had a, a employee appreciation at the first Friday in December. I think we've had been successful from Sean and I doing it to Ellen and I doing it. But I think that we, I mean, I enjoy and will love to continue it. But I think we need a subcommittee on this because Ellen and I doing all of it is really overwhelming. So.
You did a good job.
We might can help.
So if we can get, I mean, everybody can do a part, because I think we could make it where we don't, a committee, we can assign tasks, right, that everybody could go and not be in a Brown Act violation? Right? How would that work out?
Well, if it's.
Well, if it's purely a social gathering and you're not there to talk about um city business or matters within the jurisdiction of the city, then it wouldn't be a Brown Act violation.
But I mean, if to give every, so that if everybody wanted to help to set up.
Yeah, because you wouldn't be talking, you would be volunteering and you wouldn't be, the council members. Just wouldn't be able to go off in a corner and talk about city business. As long as you're just there volunteering and helping. And it's a. Yeah, as long as that doesn't occur, it's not, it's not a council meeting because you're not there to talk about city business.
Okay, I can, I can help. Yeah, so if we want to, everybody say what they want to do because we need food, decorations. Prizes. Awards. It's, it's a lot. Clean up.
Clean up is, clean up, it would be helpful, we have. It's a lot.
But I don't know, yeah, does we talk about now?
My only thing is it always hits right around my husband's birthday. That's why I haven't been able to help the last couple of years. Because we always are doing something and we can only just barely make it in. So I will help with whatever I can. I just can't be, it's hard to have a requirement when I'm. Well, for that, it just is a bad time here, unfortunately.
First, you can shop November fifteenth, so, you know.
Yeah.
Being be done.
I'll do some of the shopping. I'm onto all of it.
Decorations again.
Okay, we can discuss later.
Yeah.
And and Mayor, just, Mayor, just to give a little bit more of a specific answer to Councilmember Belt's question.
What?
Um, just to give you the specifics on your question, it's government code section five four nine five two point two B. Five. And it, it, there's an exception under the Brown Act for the attendance of a majority of the members of a legislative body at a purely social or ceremonially ceremonial occasion. Provided that a majority of the members do not discuss among themselves. Business of a specific nature that is within the subject matter jurisdiction legislative body.
Call for the motion for either December first or December second.
I'll move for December first.
Yeah, I agree with the first. Because I think employees therefore can just come after work.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really kind of, yeah. I think that works better for them.
And you said it's historically been the first Friday?
Hmm.
Well, then it makes sense to have it the first Friday. I'll second that motion.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney report.
And I have nothing to add this evening.
Thank you. City manager.
Yeah, hi. So, uh, yes, uh, city manager. So, uh.
That'd be you.
That would be you.
First time I've sat in this.
First time officially.
The role of city manager. So, you know, I'll never forget tonight, uh, the first time I sat here as a city manager. It was, you know, not only is it the ten-ten uh Chinese Independence Day, but it's also my uh anniversary with my wife.
Also, congratulations.
Congratulations. A special day for me and it'll be forever in my life that, you know, this day, we can't. City manager. So I'm thankful for the trust of the city council and and continue our efforts together to. To keep striving and working diligently to improve the lives of the. Now, that being said, uh, we've got a memorandum in your, in your report that we're going to add. We, we basically do it at every uh first council meeting. We, we put a manager's report together and we. Provide it out to the public. That's going to be part of your agenda moving forward.
Hmm.
Um, that way you got it. It's part of the record. And I wanted to take this up. So within that, you've got various departments giving updates of what is done throughout the cities. So it's important that, you know, the members of the public understand that we're not just sitting in in our cubicles or, you know, out in the field. We actually are very busy. We get a lot of good things going on. So, but that being said, I wanted to provide a. Um, see this, uh, cannabis to help you all understand where we're at with. Because, you know, I don't think we've, we've done something like this before to really talk about where we're at with that. I just want to use my manager's report to do that. So you'll put that up as a presentation. Here we go. All right, so the city of needles, uh, it's October tenth. So as you all recall, there was a progression in how we got here. So in nineteen ninety-six. Proposition two thousand fifteen, uh, two hundred and fifteen allowed us to. Uh, the compassionate use act, which legalized cannabis throughout the state, right? And so that was for physicians to be able to write uh prescriptions to to get cannabis, right? And then in two thousand and ten, we had six dispensaries just show up in our city and the, and the council had uh immediate, without permits. And so at that point in time, the city did adopt a ban and the city initiated review of the issue. Appointed by a citizens commit, uh, committee to study the matter. Um, that led to measure S. Measure S was voted upon by the majority of the folks here in the city of needles to approve. The ten percent grocery seeds tax on cannabis. And you can see it was eighty-one percent of the voters approved it. And then two thousand and fifteen Medical Marijuana Regulation Safety Act. Allowed this regulatory scheme where light cities were able to license uh various cultivating, processing. And transporting, testing of of medical cannabis. And so at that point in time, um, the city did implement an ordinance would regulate it and allowed those types of activities to occur within our city. And then proposition sixty-four is allowed it to be recreational for personal, personal use. And then we went ahead and amended our. We amended our ordinance numerous times to, you know, allow for cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, to allow for recreation. And and to, uh, you know, utilize uh the cannabis businesses within our community. So you can see this is the long. Long history that the city has actually uh been a part of since two thousand and ten. And so that's almost thirteen, that's thirteen years of uh cannabis business timeline. And, you know, there's been some economic indicators that show an increase in population. You know, with those ninety-three land use entitlements and, you know, basically a million square feet of total permitted cannabis. Has uh led to, you know, e- economic uh improvement to our community. And we'll get to that in a second. But, you know, want y'all to become familiar with the kind of businesses that are within our community. So we've got one consumption lounge, three manufacturing facilities. Seven cannabis retail businesses, five distribution facilities, and eighteen cultivation facilities. So that's thirty-four businesses that are active within our community um that are in the cannabis uh business. And again, that's uh the economic development strategy was to create an economy which attracted people. Uh, which attracted businesses that wanted to invest in our community, which people need housing, which has increased the population and brings developers and retailers to follow. And we can, uh, we can see that with uh that economic model model working. Uh, and we're right in the middle of that. And so there's people need housing. And so of the five hundred and eighty-six actively working employees within the city of needles. And we do a live scan for all these folks that are in these businesses. And that's why we know we could to a. To a daily total of how many folks are actually actively working in our, as an active employee in this business. But the problem you can see is that of the five hundred and eighty-six, only a hundred and eighteen are needles residents. And so the problem there is we need housing. The housing piece is allowing or is um motivating folks to live on the other side of the river. You know, three hundred and forty Arizona residents to come across the bridge. Uh, every day, come to work, and then they go back to Arizona. And so our economic development strategy now is to create the housing needed, the workforce, how they may attract these folks. And we're going down, we're going down those roads. And so back in two thousand and eighteen, you know, it was the if, if, if speech. Have you ever heard, uh, Mr. Daniels give it? And so we're on, we're on the path to recovery, which started in two thousand and eighteen. We did win an economic development award from the state. For this uh game changer initiative. And just to give you an idea. The total property value from the city, if you look at the two thousand and eight levels, that's when the whole economy crashed across the United States. We've, we've significantly increased that tremendously from our two thousand, uh, uh, from two thousand and seventeen even by five hundred and thirty-six million. And so we are on the upward trajectory. And that's development occurring, that's people rehabbing the existing housing stock, that buildings being built. In our community. And so, again, with the passage of uh measure S, we have seen eighteen million dollars worth of dollars. Come back and has been spent throughout our community. You know, I'll show you how in a, in a couple of different ways. Uh, and but before I do that, this is us on the New York Times uh front page. But an economic development program which shakes ten percent of our revenues from cannabis and puts it towards non-cannabis businesses. Here's an example of the two room hotel, twelve million dollar project, which not only increased our property value, which not only brought more. Folks, residents, opportunities for jobs within our community. But also brought in T O T revenues, which increases our general fund. So you can see that these auxiliary. Um, these auxiliary businesses that are being created from the cannabis industry indirectly. Uh, this one being an example of the economic development program. Here's another business that was uh benefited from the economic development program. And then again, the filter change. We don't have, I like to tell people, we don't have Starbucks, but we've got, we got. You can get your stuff changed and coffee at the same time. And again, it goes back to putting those, those revenues back into our street, uh, into our uh aging infrastructure. And so we've done up to eight million dollars in essential street improvements that's come back to our um residents that have seen the benefits directly. Um, here's another one. So this is the first phase that we did um early on out. And then here's the phase we just did recently. We're working on a third phase right now. And so, you know, we've been able to uh put money, the cannabis revenues to into the hardware and infrastructure. And we hear about these things, but it's important to just really see it. And so, um. Again, not only that, uh, looking at the NPUA side. We were able to initially put a, or we still have it, we put a a hundred thousand per megawatt deposit. Financial uh responsibility on these businesses. As you recall, I, I didn't live here at the time, but it's my understanding that the power would go out for days at a time. And so at that point in time, then the city uh created this, uh, uh, you know, it was genius on behalf of the city council. And the NPUA and the city manager to put this hundred thousand per megawatt deposit together. Because that's really improved our community. You can see this is uh the one point two million uh uh substation on the left, the Royal Shaver. And then on the right, um, you're seeing that we did the Yoni uh substation uh also. And then we also did a one point eight million dollar intertie. And so by, by these folks buying power has brought our power utility company. Uh, and really increased its revenues by, by at least fifteen million, uh, which is projected this fiscal year's report for. So it doubled in the last five years. So, so more people buying power as a result. So, so it's like, so more jobs, more power being bought, more auxiliary, uh, you know, businesses that are being created. And so it's really just a testament of, you know, the, the cannabis uh industry as a whole. But uh with that, there are also challenges that come about. And so of the thirty-four businesses, so let me step back. The NPUA has a terms and conditions that allows long-term payment arrangements. So of the thirty-four businesses, we do have four businesses that are needed to utilize long-term payment plans. You know, M I H being the entity that is, uh, has the biggest um need for um a, the long-term payment plan. The details are in the packet. You want to read it. But at the end of the day, our code enforcement program ensures compliance by regulating these cannabis industries. So they're in here at least once a month to ensure that these folks are following state law. That they're following our local regulations and that we are actively ensuring that they're meeting the conditions that is part of the permit, which they had signed off on. And so it's, it's really a collaborative effort. So just to give you an update on code enforcement. Uh, a hundred and eighty-six citations have been issued uh since the beginning of this. Violations include odor, tax delinquency, absence of active state license, odor and non-compliance, and signage. And so our active, our code enforcement are active and ensure that we're. Uh, these businesses are following the rules and regulations that they promised us. So furthermore. Uh, we've actually put on bulletproof vests a couple of times and gone after the illicit market. That was, uh, so we had nine illicit cannabis code enforcement. Uh, actions, uh, with the assistance of the sheriff, of course, they were very uh helpful in assisting us to get, uh, you know, because it's a civil matter. Uh, firm in the beginning. And then, uh, it's become a, you know, there's been this effort that the uh sheriff has led in recent years to. To help uh shut down the illicit cannabis activities. So we appreciate their efforts. And so that, that just concludes my manager's report. I just wanted to provide it. You know, it's important that we go through this and we understand we might be doing, we might go ahead and do this annually. Uh, you know, our economy. We do need a diversify, the fight, diversify our economy, but we also need to celebrate the wins that we do have in front of us. So I just wanted to provide that, uh, save the cannabis for you. So y'all, we're on the same page and, um, I, you know, so. So there's no, uh, you can do Q and A, or you can just come ask me if you have any questions separately. But I appreciate you all and, uh, you know, I look forward to, uh, you know, my new goal and improving the lives of the residents of the schools. Thank you for your trust.
Thank you. Okay, um, councilmember Campbell. Oh, sorry.
It's code enforcement appreciation month for a week. We'll make it month just to celebrate our folks, just because they worked so diligently. So, you know, when you see Adrian out there, you see Ashley or Bernie, just. Give them your thanks because they work so hard to, um, to, you know, to help, uh, not only enforce cannabis business, but also the residences that. Throughout the, um, the community. And I've got a laundry list of other things that I'll just email y'all.
Thank you. Do you want me to list any? I have my list here. So, um, thank you. I, I want to say congratulations to Reenie, our new utilities manager. We're so thrilled to have you. Um, and Patrick, of course, congratulations to you, our city manager. I'm looking forward to us staying on the trajectory that we have been on for years now, going in this direction. And I know that we're going to continue to do that. I did want to say congratulations to code enforcement because you guys have been doing a lot. Uh, after, and it's a very thankless job. No one thanks you out there. We thank you here, but nobody thanks you out there. We understand that. And I want to thank our sheriff's department always for protecting us. We are not unaware of the crime situation. You know, we, we do get the reports and we do live here and it's, it's hard. So there's hard decisions and we'll move forward with that. See where that goes. I will also want to thank, I have a lot of people left. I want to thank the public for attending our meeting. It really means a lot to us. When people come here and actually take the time to sit in here, whether it's to talk to us or tell us something. And thank you, John, for saying that. Because I have had several conversations with people in the past couple of weeks who kind of slammed me. About this council ignoring or not addressing. And we can't. If it's not on the agenda, we can listen, but we cannot have a conversation. Because then it eliminates the possibility of the public being able to come in and talk about it. And that's your right is to come in and talk to us. So it has to be on the agenda. That gives you the right to come up and talk to us. You can talk to us about anything. But on the matter that you want to talk us about, we can't talk unless it's on the agenda. So we do listen. And we do have the side, behind the scenes, things that we do. We're, we're not ignoring anyone. It breaks my heart that people think that we ignore them because we don't. We. You know, some situations and subjects are pretty painful and and hard to address. And, and there's a lot of ways, you know, trying to figure out which part of the pool we're going to fix. You know, there's always so much to go around. So, um. Well, let's see. I wanted to, um, I, I wanted to address, I want to say congratulations to us for winning the Beacon Award. And for those who don't know what the Beacon Award is, we get that because we demonstrated achievement in at least five areas. Um, agency greenhouse reductions, community greenhouse, gas reductions, agency energy savings, natural gas saving, sustainability threat best practices. And our city in particular, we do turf removal. We'll pay you to remove your turf. If you want to take up some grass and put in something else, desert landscaping, we give away showerheads. You get a rebate for toilets that are water-saving. Uh, upgrading different appliances. You get rebates for energy-saving equipment. So our city tries really hard to do all these things and we were recognized for our efforts. And I'm really proud of all of us because it's, it takes a village and we are our village. So that's what happened with that. Today, we had the ten-ten, uh, the ten-ten celebration and ten-ten, for anyone that doesn't know what that is. It's a celebration in Taiwan. Um, it's a national day marking the uprising of nineteen eleven, um, when they ended China's dynasty. And the Imperial Dynasty and ushered in the Republic of China. So the, uh, the government led to Taiwan after losing the civil war. And, um, they have their, their own government. They're, it's separate now. We are a sister city here in needles. There are lots of sister cities in this, in this, um, country for lots of reasons. And it's a national initiative, uh, that was begun by Dwight Eisenhower shortly after World War Two to develop economic, cultural, and technical exchanges between U.S. cities. Country-states and corresponding with communities worldwide. And it, it's, um, youth education opportunities, historical bonds, and communities to realize and strengthen those things. So they come here every, today's celebration was just beautiful. It was the fiftieth anniversary. And our mayor represented us so graciously and with so much integrity and dignity. It was just wonderful to see her up there talking to everyone and. And, you know, seeing her represent our city. And they gave us beautiful gifts and they, they were so appreciative to be here and they. And they gave us beautiful gifts and they, they were so appreciative to be here and they, fifty years, they've been coming here with Robert E.'s father who started this a long time ago. So they come every year. They love coming to our city. They love visiting with us and we exchange thoughts and ideas and just even how many kids you have? They don't have that many kids. So they're fascinated by a lot of our ways of life as we are with theirs. So it's a beautiful thing. And next year, if you think about it, ten ten happens every year, ten ten at ten, right out here on the lawn. We do it every single year. So it, it was a beautiful day. I want to remind you all that the forty-seventh um annual Mojave Days is this weekend, Friday and Saturday. So there's lots going on down at the reservation. There's going to be a parade on Saturday, so.
It's, it's the twentieth.
The twentieth and twenty-first, sorry, the twentieth and twenty-first, not this weekend, twentieth and twenty-first coming up. I just want to remind you, get on your calendar. I don't want to get you down there this weekend, but they have a lot of things going on, but they have a lot of things going on right now, though. They have different activities. So if you watch their calendar, they have some things that you can participate in and watch and know about coming up to those days. So that's, um, that's all I can think of. Thank you. Um, that's it.
Yeah.
Bye, stay here, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I just also wanted to piggyback on the congratulations and we're really excited to have you, Patrick and Rainey. Um, we're very lucky. Uh, we, there was a great um, uh, retirement party for Rick this last weekend. And, you know, just some of the things he says, just like, wow, we were so lucky to have him. He, he did a great job. And I think that, and I'm so excited about, you know, the new, the new group that's up because you guys are just awesome. So anyways, have a great night.
Councilmember Poe.
Again, I'm going to parrot. Congratulations. Welcome aboard, Patrick and Rainey. I'm sure you all, all do a good job. Um, I also enjoyed the ten ten ceremony. Uh, being kind of a newcomer here, I'm still learning about all of the events and the ceremonies that are coming along and, and I really enjoyed it. A little warm and sunny, but. It was hot. But, but I did enjoy it and it's something I'm going to plan on doing every year. Easy to remember, ten, ten, ten. Um, Patrick and Ellen and Janet and I, we attended the, was there a fifth one? Yeah, there's just four of us. The annual uh Conference of California Cities, that's where we actually got the award that, that she re- represented to us tonight. And um, one thing that we also got out of it was a five thousand dollar grant to the animal shelter for operations. Uh, so, you know, we, we do spend money to go to these things, but it does reap rewards. So we got five thousand dollars. They had a little spinner thing and trying to double it, but darn it, couldn't get that, lend on that five thousand dollar mark. But uh, they were very happy. I walked in there the following Monday and said, get a hold of this business, this agency, because you get five thousand dollars. She was right on it. She was at her keyboard. So that was, that was really good. And then also there was uh various educational sessions that we were all able to attend. There were so many, we divvied them out. Um, so there were some really, really good ones and I've got to do some homework on this end, but it was, all in all, it was a very good session. And um, one of the things that uh kind of uh follows through, that there was one session that I was at and somebody mentioned, if you're from Northern California, Crescent City, you're down in Needles. And I went, yay, Needles. And uh, one of the women from the uh, the agency, she's, you're Needles? And I said, yeah. I am in love with Needles. I mean, we, we are really getting a great reputation among the California cities for the actions that we're taking. And the awards and the accolades also speak for it. So it's kind of fun to be a, uh, not to be the redheaded stepchild. So that, that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Belt.
Uh, yes, this Saturday is um my dyslexia awareness golf tournament. If anybody wants to play golf, please sign up. There's still three man um scramble and there will be, a hole nine will be a chance to, if you make a hole in one, a chance to win a four-day, three-nights um experience to the Masters Golf. The Gus Game. I guess that's like the Mecca of golf. Um, all you have to do is get a hole in one. I mean.
That's it.
Pretty simple.
Right?
And on that note, if you uh have any, want to volunteer any time to go and watch and see, I do need a few people to sit and keep an eye on if they really make the hole in one. Let me know if you are interested. It's not hard. You just sit there and watch the hole. It'll take anybody, any times. Need a couple more people. Um, also, we had the Kitty Parade this last weekend. It was nice, the school got out there, it was really hot there also decorated and Patrick and his family was out there. It's really fun. It's nice to keep doing these things. That tradition in itself is, I don't even know, seventy-five years old, I believe, something, something extremely long. And, and it's nice to see, to have it keep going. I mean, you could see sometimes the last few years, it's kind of was teetering on not being able to happen. And it's nice the school's putting it on and to see this junior class, I believe, got the donations or the money for it. So it was a, a good cause. And uh, I think that's all I got. Have a good day.
Uh, Councilmember Longbreak.
Thank you. Uh, Patrick, congratulations and Rainey too. I know she's not here, but, oh, oh, yeah, there she is. Congratulations. It's, it's good to have you both with the city. Um, I have a couple uh, um, actual issues. Uh, one of them was, was uh our thirty grants for the uh veterans. Uh, it was announced here that we had thirty, thirty um vouchers for veterans. We, we don't have thirty vouchers for veterans. Uh, I, when it was announced, I, I told a veteran that uh they have vouchers for uh, for, for that, for housing. And the veteran went in, went in the um, went in there, you know, of course, and uh, uh, he was pretty much denied because they don't have them yet. Uh, so I'd appreciate it if something said, uh, it is what it is. That's, that's all. That's all on that. And um, also, um, on twelve oh seven, twelve oh nine Broadway, there's two refrigerators sitting out in front of the house. And that's just right on Broadway here. And they have the doors on them too. And that's very dangerous for the kids, yeah. And they've been sitting out there for the last uh week or so, two weeks maybe. Uh, I know there was a bunch of junk there at first and now I see the refrigerator, refrigerators out there. And uh, even if we can't find the owners, we need to dismantle those doors. So if we could do that, that would be appreciated. And uh, thank you all very much for being a service here.
Oh, congratulations to Rainey and Patrick. And the meeting is adjourned.
All right.